Okay, we'll move right along to the next hearing. Our next hearing is on Council Bill 21-0093, revising the whistleblower's rights and responsibilities at the request of Councilman Dorsey. And so I will turn the floor over to Councilman Dorsey to introduce this bill and explain what it does. And then we will move on. I see the Inspector General has logged on. We will hear from her and move on to other testimony as well. Thank you. Go ahead, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do see Yvonne Brooks from the Inspector General's office on the attendee list. And I know that she is here to testify on behalf of the office. She runs the whistleblower program.
And if there's anybody else also who needs to be elevated, just send me a message on the chat and we'll have them elevated.
So thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee. Yvonne and the Inspector General and Vic Turbola in the Law Department and the Mayor's Office have all been very good partners in putting this together, as well as our partners in HR and other agencies. This bill is basically just to make some changes that we've learned were necessary since the passage of the whistleblower's Rights and Responsibilities ordinance last term for the basic purposes of streamlining city employees and others who are protected under this law's ability to report. So making it easier for people to report alleged or believed acts of retaliation against them and making it more practical for them to be investigated. And just in general, making some minor changes in language that makes things clearer, more discernible. And in some cases, broadening slightly the scope of what is covered as a type of protected disclosure. Again, primarily just for making, for adding clarity to language and intent that already exists. So this is, I would say, very much corrective in nature. And I think for a more detailed explanation of that, it'd be good to hear directly from Yvonne. So I ask that the committee look favorable on this bill today. And I really appreciate you hearing it today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, I'm muted. We'll now turn it over to the Inspector General first, if she or anybody from her office would like to testify on this bill.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is Yvonne Brooks. I'm the Deputy Inspector General for the Office of Inspector General. And I am currently in charge of running the whistleblower retaliation investigation program. The OIG stands by its report submitted to the committee and reiterates that we support the proposed revisions in Bill 21-00939. Following up with what Councilman Dorsey had just stated, I believe that these revisions are much needed based on the first reading of the law as it is. Initially, we had complainants having to report to their supervisors that they had a complaint of whistleblower retaliation. In most cases, based on my experience in doing these types of investigation, it tends to be the supervisor. So the amendments here would eliminate that step. And it would also eliminate the step, as the law is currently written, for a supervisor to have to initiate and complete an investigation. That added burden. Now they can just report to an HR officer or to the Office of Inspector General. And I believe the rest of these amendments, as they are proposed in this bill, would give, you know, provide the needed and added assurance that it's okay for our employees to speak up and that there is value in doing what's right for the city. We, I will add that we have already had about eight whistleblower complaints, five active investigations. Now I have held back going really public and publishing what we have right now because I knew that this legislation was being drafted and it was in the works and hopefully, fingers crossed, being passed. But we already have an internal policy on processes and regulation. It wouldn't take much to change it based on these amendments. And we're already ready to publish when we're finished with that. And we already have a training program put together. So I believe that the numbers that we have now will probably grow exponentially once we roll everything out. But again, the OIG just wants to support, reiterated support for the amendments in this bill. And I can answer any questions of any of the members of the committee.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna go through all the agencies and then we'll open the floor up to questions. So if you're available to just stick around, that'd be great. Next up, Vic, do you have anything to add from the Law Department?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. This is Vic Turbola from the City Law Department. We've been working really closely with the OIG's office on this, as well as Councilman Dorsey. So our bill report says that we, that we're ready to approve for form and legal sufficiency. And of course, if there are any questions, I'm here to take those as well.
Thank you very much. Do we have somebody from the City Administrator's office here? Or Nina, do you want to speak on behalf of the Administrator?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Nina Themelis, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The City Administrator's office stands by its report in support of legislation. There are no additional comments.
Okay, thank you. I see we have Finance on here also. Pedro, do you have something that you wanted to add?
We just want to say, thank you for the opportunity. We stand by our report.
Okay, thank you. I think we covered the agencies over here. Okay, colleagues. Does anybody have any questions? Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I got one question really. With changing that flow, how many whistleblower complaints do we get in through that current process? It sounds like it sensibly should not go there. But how many, would that result in a ton more work going to the IG's office? Are you guys equipped to handle those extra complaints? I have no sense of the scale here.
I can safely say it might. The complaints that we have gotten in have come directly to the OIG office. Not sure if we've had any actual referrals from the agency, but I believe it's because most of the employees do not, are not readily aware of this particular law. It was, became effective during the pandemic. Right when the pandemic started, it was March. And then, you know, we've been kind of just shut down. But we had been behind the scenes working on policy processes. So if this were to go through, we'd be ready to go ahead and kind of work with DHR and roll this out to everyone. I believe, once that happens, we will get more complaints. But because the way the law is structured with the covered disclosures and these types, even though we've had these complaints, we do vet carefully of what exactly falls under this particular law. It could be retaliation, but it may not fall under this particular law. It might fall under, you know, something with HR or EEOC. But we can vet those things out and refer those individuals to their appropriate agencies.
Got it. So what I'm hearing is, we don't know yet how big of response we'll see.
Yes.
One, because we don't have an accurate count of what has been coming through the old system. But then two, we expect that you may get more because people didn't feel comfortable perhaps submitting through their supervisor anyway.
Well, the ones I will tell you that when we've gotten complaints, if it sounded like it might fall under the whistleblower retaliation law, I would ask those questions. So I would follow up and I'll say, well, there is a law that was just passed either, you know, a few months ago. This is what it is. And explained everything that goes under that particular law. So a couple of complaints that I did have, once I've explained the process, yes. Under this law, you would have to report to your supervisor or somebody within that chain. Only if your supervisor is implicated or anybody in that chain of command is implicated, then you can come to us. I did use, you know, discretion. If you're already coming here and complaining about something else and it looks like it fits, then I could at least explore whether or not this is a covered disclosure. There was retaliation. But a lot of the times, they would stop and say, well, who does the report go to when it's finished? It goes to the head of the agency. And I think there was one complainant who did not want to go forward because of that particular issue that, okay, if it goes back to the head of the agency, what are they going to do? It's like, I can't tell you that because there's nothing written in the law that says they really have to do anything. So.
And I'm trying to remember, in the laws I read, it goes back to the administrator and the administrator then brings it to the agency is how it's structured now, right? And the administrator has to bring it to the agency.
Yeah, so the complaint under the way, the way the amendments are written.
Yes.
So they would be able to report it to an HR officer. And what I've been doing in the background is talking to HR officers for, I think we did one with TPW going through what the whistleblower law says. And I plan to do that with a DHR agency, citywide, and say, if this happens, if they come to you with this type of complaint, even though it's not written here, they can go report it to their HR officer. I believe the HR officer, you know, I'll work with DHR. They can either refer directly to us because we have the training and expertise, or they could do it there. But what I want to eliminate, even though there's amendment for it, is the appeal process. Because I believe under the way the proposed legislation reads that if the complainant is not satisfied with the HR officer's investigation or the results, then they can appeal to the OIG. However, that, and that's fine. But I can work with DHR and HR officers and say, if you want to just refer directly to us, we can do that too.
Got it, got it. So there's.
Efficient for everyone.
Yeah, there's some degree of triage before it gets to you, hopefully. And then even when it does get to you, you do some further triage. So that, got it, okay. That answers my question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, may I just add one point?
Sure.
Thanks. And just to be clear, on the back end of the process of whistleblower complaints, the report, Yvonne talked about how there was at least one person who wanted to come forth. But then, once they realized that the final report would go to the head of their agency, they decided they didn't want to make a report. It sounds like, one of the things that this bill addresses is what happens in that final stage. It says that that report will go, one, to the whistleblower themselves so that they have a full account of the findings. Two, to that agency head. And three, this is new, to the city administrator, a position that didn't exist when we originally wrote the law that we have now. Further, it says that the city administrator, within 14 days of receipt of the written findings, must meet with the relevant agency head and the inspector general to discuss the recommendations included in the written findings. And this is, this new provision in the law is aimed specifically at ensuring that there is a level of transparency that, that the, the agency head can't simply ignore something that was brought to their attention, that there's accountability in that not only being brought necessarily to the city administrator, but that there's also a meeting between those two with the author of the report present.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question for the sponsor. I'm on, I believe, page six of the bill. One second, find the line. Ah, okay, yeah, here I am. I'm in section 87, C1. It says, "Within 150 days of receipt of the complaint, the Office of the Inspector General will present its written findings, including recommendations for action based on the investigation, to, one, the city administrator, to the relevant agency or department head, and, three, the whistleblower." Can, can you walk me through what, what you had envisioned? Like those recommendations, like what type of recommendations are you talking about? Because obviously, you know, every, every case is gonna be different. But Councilman, can you talk about what you intended there?
I guess, I mean, I think that, obviously, as you said, every case is going to be different. But I think that, and so I think it's gonna take some careful scrutiny to, you know, to know what is the appropriate and reasonable kind of remedial recommendation in any given case. Whether that's restoration of a position, you know, if, if an unwarranted or retaliatory demotion occurred or loss of hours occurred, you know, that were, was a result of retaliatory action, that, you know, I imagine that it would be reasonable for the report to say, you know, we think that these hours should be restored and that some disciplinary action should be taken against the person who, who took the, you know, what we believe to be the retaliatory action. And I think that the severity of that recourse for, you know, for anybody who has, you know, been found to have taken retaliatory action, the severity of the remedial action is gonna be commensurate with the severity of the action they took.
So, no, that's really helpful. And I was just recalling the discussion we had with the OIG during our budget hearing in early June. And one of the things that, that we had talked about was that the OIG doesn't make recommendations for disciplinary action. And the OIG had stated that she, she did not recall ever doing that in the past. So I'm just wondering, is this a, is this a change of, is, are you envisioning, Councilman, kind of a change of course there on that front?
This is a minor change in addition, a minor addition to the language that already exists here. I think that that is the only new provision in this section of the law. And, you know, my understanding is, is pretty common for whistleblower protection laws to include a recommendation of restorative, you know, restorative action or what have you. I could tell you that in, you know, other cases, those kind of things are perhaps overseen by some other bureaucratic entity that we don't have or that we're not creating here. Hence, the, the direct involvement of the city administrator in these conversations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had my two questions, but if I may, I do have two more questions for the sponsor.
We don't have a two-question limit. You can go ahead.
I like, I enjoy this committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman, thank you. That's very helpful. And my next question was, is this based on, on best practices? And it sounds like, knowing you, you've done your research, that this is a best practice in terms of making that recommendation on disciplinary action?
Yeah, honestly, it's been a while since we started drafting this bill. It took a long time to kind of get it together. But we did some homework on the front end of that. It's also something that I believe carries over from some, from some of what Womata did when Yvonne was there. And I think Yvonne can also speak to those best practices. But I do also want to just kind of emphasize that I think that what is intended here is, is more the recommendation of remedy versus discipline, I guess. It's more about making whole the person who retaliatory action was taken against than taking retributory action or retributive action against the person who was retaliatory.
No, thank you, Councilman. My last question is, do you intend for those, those recommendations that, that could be doing some combination of, you know, restorative, recommendations for restorative action, recommendations for disciplinary action? Do you intend for those recommendations to be made public?
I had a conversation with, so, so the, the answer is that I think there's value in the, in there being as much information as possible being made available to the public. But that because whistleblower cases in particular are so personnel-oriented, it is, it can be difficult to disclose everything within the constraints of personnel disclosure. Does that, if that makes sense? I do believe that the, and I think, again, Yvonne should speak to this, is that, that Yvonne is very interested in being able to thread that needle. I know from my dealings with the office in just so many different respects, the degree to which the value and the importance, the success of the office and its work hinges on people's, not just awareness of the office and its role, but also its trustworthiness to hear people and to see them, to see their concerns through to, to a reasonable end. And that making the reports, I believe, for whistleblower complaints is as important a part of increasing awareness to whistle, to would-be whistleblowers as the reports are that we already get for all of the other inspector general investigations are to increasing awareness of the inspector general's office in general, if that makes sense. So in short, I believe that the office and the public benefit from reports existing. But there is a fine line to walk when dealing with personnel records and information. Again, I believe that Yvonne can speak, speak to that. So I guess, like, that do you?
Yep, that, that's helpful. And defer to the chair if you want to hear from Ms. Brooks. You have anything to add?
Yeah, if you have anything to add, you're more welcome to. Ms. Brooks, do you have something you want to say on the matter?
Yes, so, as I had talked with Councilman Dorsey earlier, because these are so personnel-heavy and so specific as to the exact retaliation, they are very hard to report in a public setting because my fear is people will figure out who it is. And I don't want them to face further blacklisting in any way or further retaliation, because a lot of times that can happen. So I do try to figure out, looking at best practices, looking at other agencies, federal agencies and state agencies to see how they do be able to report something like this without revealing the identity of the whistleblower. And it's hard. The federal government does it one way, which I'm not, some agencies, which I don't exactly agree with because I think the purpose of this entire law is to protect the whistleblower. And so we at OIG and myself will do everything I can to put the whistleblower first and those protections first. And if I could comment on the recommendations part of this particular law, it would, all we would do is write a report and say that we substantiate or we could not substantiate whistleblower retaliation. We were to substantiate, I think the recommendations would be to, you know, refer the people in authority to the remedies division of this particular law. But nothing, you know, super in particular or specific because that is what the agency head is there for and the city administrator. That we would have our report and it would be a Q and A session. They could ask us different kinds of questions. And maybe they wanted us to follow up on something else. We could also do that. But that's what that particular session would be for and see what's best for the whistleblower and the city of Baltimore in general.
Ms. Brooks, you mentioned the remedies division. I didn't quite catch that part or understand that part.
Yes, well, remedy is part of this, this particular bill. And it's not even one where it says the, it's any remedy or violation, the subtitle, "The Agency Head May." So it would be more referring to, these are some of the remedies that you may want to explore if we substantiate a finding of whistleblower retaliation. So depending what the facts are.
Yeah, that, that's very helpful. And just reading that section 8-8, there doesn't seem to be anything in there related to disciplinary action. It seems to kind of consistently track with what the sponsor referenced with respect to actions taken to, you know, essentially make the whistleblower whole again, if you will.
Right, like if, if we find that and, you know, if the supervisor did commit retaliation, okay, we substantiate the retaliation. But the discipline part, that is not within our authority to, you know, say this is, this is what needs to happen. We'll leave that up to the agency head and to the city administrator, if that necessary.
Okay, so that's really helpful. So just to close the loop, because I kind of heard two different things, one from the sponsor and one from you. The shared understanding now is that those recommendations are not going to include disciplinary action for whoever caused the harm. That they're, they're more focused on restorative action for the victim of that harm. Is that, do I understand correctly?
That's correct, Councilman.
Thank you so much. That was very helpful. I appreciate both of your helping me get up to speed on this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and if, and if I may, also, I just want to just clarify one piece of that because I guess I'm confused on it also. It, once it's substantiated, is the recommendation, the recommend, the final recommendation that goes to the director, do they have the ultimate say on what, on what action they take? Or is this bill saying that whatever the recommendation of the inspector general's office is the action that the agency would have to take?
The, the power continues to reside with the agency head. That's where the buck stops in terms of remedies, discipline, whatever. And that's, that is, that is what makes this a little bit different than some other proposals for whistleblower thing. I mean, in, in other cases, there might be, you know, in other jurisdictions or elsewhere, other circumstances, there might be some body that just says, this is what you're doing to fix this. End of discussion.
So that's, so that's similar to, to how the water billing works now, right? Where it goes to the Environmental Control Board. They can provide a. Where it goes to the environmental control board, they can provide a recommendation. But it ultimately is the director of DPW that determines what the outcome of a water, of a water bill issue is. Is that correct?
Yes, but I would add again, just to emphasize that in this case, 25% or more of what my office gets is water billing cases, and that's just my office, you know? Whistleblower cases are and are hopefully in rare need, rare demand. So there are very few of these, which makes it so that when we call on the, the city administrator to be a part of this process, it is so that nobody's getting the runaround. Nobody is, you know, letting something fly under the radar. That there is a seriousness that is given to whistleblower complaints and findings. And, and that it is well within our capacity to treat them all with the level of concern and respect that they each deserve.
All right, and I like that, and I support that, that, that idea. Is, is that also partially, does it then go to the city administrator if the complaint is against the director of one of the agencies? Is it then on the city administrator to, to take the action at that point? You want me to elaborate?
I mean, well, I
If the retaliation Correct.
Yeah, if the, if the complaint is about the director of the agency, you know, in my view, and I think probably we all see it this way, is that their superior is the mayor of the city of Baltimore or a deputy mayor. And so by going, you, you know, it's, it's, it's always about looking one level, level up, right? And so with respect to, it's just, I guess, my general sense about this, that, that if we're looking at agencies as agencies, then we can look at the mayor's cabinet as a kind of an agent, a, a, as an agency kind of infrastructure, right? So if it, if it is a member of the mayor's cabinet, then the buck's got to go to the mayor.
Gotcha. And then my, my last question, I guess, of the law department would be, with, within this framework, are we opening ourselves up as a city to any, any li, financial liability? If there's not a consistent recommendation across the board? So tip, I would assume, and I could be completely off base here, but people, if the retaliation is, you know, where somebody loses their position or is demoted or, or fired, I assume that typically ends in a lawsuit. So I like the idea of some type of restorative, you know, restorative recommendation to try to just resolve the issue. But is, is that, are we opening ourselves up to any liability by adding that piece to the puzzle where, you know, if somebody goes and points out and says, well, you know, in, in this agency, one, in a similar situation, that person got their job back. But, you know, in my agency, agency two, I didn't get my job back. And therefore, you know, I, I have more grounds to, to sue the city.
Yeah. Chair, it's, it's, you know, these are always fact-specific. We are not opening ourselves to any more litigation than we already are, are exposed to litigation, whether we have these provisions or not. So I, I don't think anything extraordinary is, is being hatched here by this legislation.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next person I see on my screen is Councilman Burnett.
I don't have any additional questions. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to be clear about what we're dealing with here. My understanding is that, you know, somebody files a grievance on some issue or complains to the OIG on some issue. Their supervisor or someone higher up finds out and fires that person or demotes them because that becomes a, it's an issue. And then so that person who was just demoted says, hey, you can't do that. And then these kick in, right, as a way to say, hey, I was retaliated against for actually doing what I'm supposed to do, which is report waste, fraud and abuse, right? So in this particular case, when these kick in, it seems to me like the provisions are, are really good for protecting that particular person, making sure that they can either get their job back. Or, or would they end up being moved within city agency as well? Or we just don't know that. It's very specific to the entity. Because it seems to me like if I'm reporting a sexual harassment, right? And then I get demoted because I reported sexual harassment to, about a supervisor. But I want a job in the city. I shouldn't get fired for it, but I don't want to work with that supervisor. So, I mean, I think we want to make sure that we have enough protections, depending on what kind of issue it is, that there's some flexibility there. And I don't know how to express it here, but just to make, just to sort of call that out.
Yeah, I think, thank you, Councilwoman. This, um, I think this is a really good emphasis on the trust that we have to have in the chief administrative officer and the agency head and, you know, the mayor's office to ensure that, especially in such cases as the example you've given, that, that the restorative action and any other action that is necessary to remedy not just the acute issue, but the underlying causes or permissiveness that allowed it to occur in the first place are also addressed adequately. The, again, it's going to be up to the agency head. And I think more than anything, that what this assures is that it gets to them in a way that they, it is not necessarily getting to them right now, or has not necessarily gotten to them in the past. We're, we're here to make sure that the people who have faced retaliatory action are able to be heard.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's it for me.
No problem. Councilwoman President Middleton?
No questions, but just a statement. I just kind of see this as a added protection in accountability and helping to reassure that government employees, you know, do have a voice. And if there are any added protective measures out there, it's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Conway?
No further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anybody else have any follow-up questions before we move on to the general public? Nope. Okay, Richard, do you want to see if we have any public testimony?
The attorneys at this point look mostly like staff and media. Oh, I can see any names I don't, okay. One name I don't, um. See, we all are. See, we all are. No response. Okay. Everybody else? Jimmy Sal, Phillips, Nathan Poole, Summer Weiss, I think are all staff. The, and nobody has a hand up, so I think that's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Give me one minute. All right, if there's no further testimony, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the bill.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Ramos. I'm sorry, where was the second from?
Burnett.
Burnett.
Okay. Mr. Chair, we're moving it favorable with no amendments. Are correct?
Correct.
Okay, ready for a roll call? Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torres is absent. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, there are six votes in the affirmative, no negatives. This bill is ripe for second read on Monday.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dorsey, you have anything you want to close out with?
No, just my thanks to you, Mr. Chair, to the committee and staff and agencies. Thank you so much.
Not a problem. Thank you. All right, that concludes our hearings today. Richard, we can close out the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.